Yep, and going right.
Yep, we are live on YouTube.
Okay. Well, let's call this latest planning commission zoom meeting to order would all rise in for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. So just want to remind everybody we're we're being livestreamed and recorded on YouTube. So we are whatever happens tonight will be recorded and reviewable at any time by anyone. So careful what you say. We're going to do roll call votes again as we have done with all these zoom meetings. So. So anybody that's listening. Anybody that's listening by telephone, there's instructions if you need to make a comment, I believe it's dial star nine at the public comment times and the host will let you in. Basically, when you do star nine, you're sent you raising your hand. All right, and I think we're all set. So we have a agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda, Tim or Ray?
There are none.
Okay, we have an agenda. Would entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
Motion to accept the agenda is proposed.
Second.
O'Neil second.
All right, thanks, Tim. Okay, Kim, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Seltzer.
You're muted, Anne.
Oh, she's muted.
And you will have to unmute yourself.
There you go.
There we go. Okay, Commissioner Seltzer. Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Commissioner Bean.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Bob, you are also muted. If you could unmute yourself.
Yes.
Six yes motion carries.
Minutes from the last meeting. Hope everybody take a minute and look them over. Are there any changes? And if there are no changes or comments, I would accept a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Seltzer moved the minutes to be accepted as as presented.
We have a second.
O'Neil second.
Hey, Kim, if we do a roll call vote again.
Commissioner Seltzer.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Commissioner Bean.
Yes.
And Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Six yes motion carries.
All right. The A's on reports ZBA looks like Phil's not here tonight. Unless I'm missing him somewhere.
No, both Phil and Jerry called and indicated they would not be able to attend this evening.
Okay. Parks and Rec.
As I said in the last meeting, I won't be able to attend again until December because of my teaching schedule.
Board of Commissioners. I'm sure there's a lot going on there.
Well, that's interesting. Board of Commissioners passed their $21 million budget. I think I may have mentioned that to you the last time where we were in the process of doing it. We did pass it. In regards to the jail, County County Jail that's going to be built. Remus and Summerter Road. I don't know if I think I disclosed that at the last meeting, but that's where it's going to be going. At least that's the plan. We have had discussions now in regards to how to fund for that, not necessarily if we take out a bond or whatever, but as far as how funds are going to come from, it looks like. It's through this committee here. The wind turbines are going to be helping pay for a lot of that. The funds are going to have to be restricted or reserved. Commissioners are going to have to make a designation to make those funds restricted or reserved, which means you can't touch those other than to pay for the turbines. Combination with that will be also be used in conjunction to pay for the merge retirement program, which is currently $15.5 million unfunded. There is a plan to pay for that out of the county budget right now, usually about 1.4 million budgeted. So you take those to the 1.4 and also the wind turbine money and throw in some delinquent tax revolving fund and about seven, five more years, we'll think we can safely start touching that if not sooner, but we'll just digress and say that's when we. We'll probably have a plan for that money. All those have to be restricted and help pay for the jail and hopefully we won't have to try to seek alternative ways of funding that. So, thank you.
All right, thanks, Jim. This brings us to the township concern section. We're just going to roll that into the public comment period. So we've been doing recently. So moving on to the public comment period, if there are any township representatives that that would like to report on what's going on in their township or have any comments, this is a good time. Additionally, anybody. That's listening that has comments for. Any comments for things that aren't on the upcoming agenda items. Now is a good time.
Chairman Bean, I would like to note that we did get receive a call again from Jackie Curtis representing Denver Township. She indicated that she would be on YouTube watching again tonight and indicated everything in the township was going fine.
Good. Any other comments, Ray?
At this time, I don't see any hands raised from public better participating.
Close the public hearing section or the public comment section and move right up to the first public hearing that's up, special use permit number 20-07. So if staff would. Give us the pitch.
Yeah, so you have a special use permit 2007 in front of you. It's an application submitted by Levi and Sadie Yoder. In Rollin Township, Section 23, 7100 West Fremont Road is the location. It's approximately a 99 acre parcel. They're applying in an Ag 2 district to for a special use permit for a rural production and processing facility. And it would be for the construction of like small skidable type sheds, sheds that'll be commercially sold, constructed onsite inside of a building and then and then sold commercially. Little background here, we had received a complaint in May of 2020 regarding this activity. There was some buildings and selling of small accessory buildings going on. We did go out and do an inspection there and determined that there was a zoning violation. We contacted the property owner and communicated with their attorney, which I believe they're both possibly on with us tonight. At that time, Mr. Yoder had ceased operation of building in these buildings and is now going through the process to obtain. A real production and processing permit so that he can resume that type of an activity. Again, it is something that's allowed by special use permits, public hearing. Included in the application are the comments that were submitted with the application for Section 1203 requirements. Detailed site plan, various maps and documents showing compliance with the requirements of Section 1205 KK of the ordinance, which is a role production and processing under the special land use. The applicant did include 13 letters of support from various neighbors which all surrounded and enjoined the property. With the exception of one parcel, that parcel, we did not have anything from. I don't believe they live here locally, but they did receive a notice from us and we have not heard any communication. From anybody on this other than the 13 that were turned in with the application in support. We did make some notes, Ray, if you want to throw up the site plan. We did make some notes on the site plan. They're in red boxes. And they have to do with screening, some screening areas that we're looking to propose. Had to do with a dumpster that was located onsite that isn't put on. So we just kind of identified where the dumpster was that we had seen. And some additional outside storage that we saw there. There is with this type of a use under Section 1205 KK, I believe it is for. We do not allow outside storage. The applicant knows that they've identified that they would be putting that stuff inside the building and all their storage would be inside their building. We just wanted to note that we did see it when we were onsite. The applicant has provided us with a waste disposal plan, which they're required to do and the planning commission is required to accept it or approve it. The building materials that they will have generated from waste will be burned either in an incinerator, so completely enclosed, or will be burned to heat Mr. Yoder's home. Zoning ordinance, Section 1203 is in your staff report. That's the general requirements of use of which the applicants did a very good job in their application and answering for you. As well as 1205 KK, the general requirements for special land use for a rural production processing facility. Upon our review of the application, staff has determined the application is complete and appears to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. We have provided you with a copy of our site plan checklist like we do for most of these. And we do have some recommended conditions and stipulations that I will read. There's four of them. I'll read those for you in a moment here. But the the posting onsite, there was a sign posted, all the notices were prepared. And and the Morning Sun was article ad was run in the Morning Sun as required by ordinance and state law requirements. And again, as of this date, we received no correspondence. So the recommendations that staff would look, conditions and stipulations that that we would be recommending to you are as follows. One, the applicant shall provide a copy of the driveway permit or the approval of an existing driveway from the road commission, Isabella County Road Commission for this specific use. The applicant shall maintain, this is two, the applicant shall maintain the existing screening as shown on the site plan and shall install and maintain a staggered row of evergreens in a location shown on the site plan just west of the concrete pad. The screening shall be outside of the right of way and in the sight line of the neighboring residence to the southwest. The tree should be a minimum of three feet in height and should be placed 10 foot on center. Number three, the applicant shall comply with all the requirements of Section 1205 KK as agreed upon in the application. And number four, the applicant's waste disposal plan as described in the application in which I in which I had indicated they would either burn in. No open burn, it would be burned inside a completely closed container or would be burned for heat. Is something that would need to be stipulated for approval by the planning commission that you're accepting their waste plan. That's all that staff has for you at this time. You do have the motion, both sample motions for both an approval and a denial with your staff report. And could take any questions you might have at this time.
Thanks, Tim. Any questions that anybody might have?
Tim, I have a couple. I can. First, I'll just a couple of things concern me about the the applicant itself, but. In regards to operating the business before it was discovered, that's always a concern for me. I'm not going to let that get to me too much tonight, but what about the building that was built on the property? Was that built without any permits or anything? Or does that has all the permitted as far as the new construction on the building that's on the property is that is that was that built without permits or how was that though?
We have the zoning for that. I believe, Ray, there was a zoning permit issued for that building, correct?
There was not a zoning permit issued for the building that is being proposed to be used in this, the 40 by 120 shop. We did not get a zoning permit for that building prior to the operation.
Right, but we do have one now.
We have the special use permit application, but we've not yet gotten a zoning permit for the building.
For that. Okay, okay. So the so so this would give them the rights to have the building. The construction side of it, I'm unsure that the JCCA, the Joint Construction Code Authority handles the building function. So we don't handle the building here at the county. It's handled at township level.
Okay, I was just concerned if that was built without any supervision or anything like that, too. It's a concern of mine. In regards to looking at the map, just again, one of the issues with with the Moody property, I look at the Mike Wright residence. There's a similar issue in regards to separation out of the deed as far as a length of distance from a residential property line. With the Mike Wright or am I looking? Maybe I'm not looking. I'm just going off this look here. This hold up with the red line. There's a Mike Wright residence. Is that? Where is that property line at? Where's the Mike Wright? Or is that I guess I could look at my G my GFS. Is that similar to the Moody?
Well, they're over 420 feet back and it's. It does not. It meets all the setbacks. If you're asking, are we too close to that property with the building to meet the required setback for the for the rural production and processing? He does meet it on that property for right.
Okay, that's so that was not, I thought that was the issue with the Moody property that it was 100 feet from the resident. It has to be a certain distance from a residential property line, not not a residence, but a residential property line. Is that a correct statement?
It is from the property line, correct. And we did have Ray as the Moody property, Ray, the one that we dealt with and they came back with, did the title search and title work out?
That's correct. And in the in the checklist that we that we give the planning commission, it does also indicate that the closest property line that create contains a residential use is 270 feet. And I believe that is to the Mike Wright residence. And so the property line to the Mike Wright residence is 270 feet from the building from the use and the requirement in the ordinance is 250 feet.
Okay, so the Mike Wright residence, not the residence, but the Mike Wright residence. That's hard to say after all.
Yeah, the property line, Jim. Yeah, you bet.
Property. So it's so it's outside the 250.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure I wanted to clear that up. So. Yeah, that's that is that might be my only questions I had on that. So I'll reserve rights to listen to other board members and chime in if I think of anything else. So.
Right. Are there any other questions for staff regarding this? Okay. So I don't know if if. Excuse me for a minute here.
We do have the the attorney, Tom Weiss, is a representative for the Yoders. He is in the call, Kelly.
Okay, yes, if he would like to speak.
Well, just a couple of things, if I may. Mr. Yoder advises me that on the front part of the building. Can you hear me all right?
Yep, I can.
The front part of the building, the 40 by 48 section that there was, he believes a zoning permit issued when they they constructed that. But we are looking for a special use permit to operate that 40 by 120 shop. I want to emphasize that we're constructing non-residential sheds. And we've been having discussions with the township building code officials to make sure that we're complying with everything that they're interested in. I've had regular dialogue with Cliff Moth and they're in good shape there. The we were particularly sensitive to and had worked a lot with staff on the issue of these setbacks and. I'm glad that that staff is seeing that we're in accord with all the various setback requirements, not only to the right property, but also the Moody property. The number of employees here, it's a pretty small operation. Mr. Yoder. Has some male members of his household that help out. They they work in this operation. I wasn't aware of an Amish rule that they're not allowed to employ any more than three. Non-family Amish members. There there's a custom within their their order to not employ. Non-Amish members. There's some various tax reasons for that that really aren't important to this. But we're talking about a maximum of three non-family Amish members plus Mr. Yoder's sons. Storage is adequate. We acknowledge that when Mr. Johnson came out and took a look at the place that there were some materials that were stored out in front during the summer. I think Mr. Johnson will recall that behind the in the rear of the building, there's more than adequate storage back there to to store any of the raw lumber. Metal roofing, the sorts of things that there are other supplies that they're using. So complying with getting everything under the roof doesn't present an issue. As to screening, both the screening trees to the right property and dumpster screening, we've discussed that not a problem. That that conditional or condition on the approval is perfectly acceptable. So we reflect respectfully request that the commission approve this application. Thank you.
Kelly, could I add one really quick thing? I think I heard there. If I heard you, Mr. Weiss, you had indicated that there were space out back for storage. But the the ordinance actually requires that all activities, including storage, shall be within the within a completely enclosed building.
That's what I meant to say, Tim, is.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were cleaning that.
You take a look at that building. It sort of has two halves to it. They are connected. They're they're not only contiguous, they're they're under the same roof. And the rear part of that building has more than adequate storage for any of the material. So it would not be outside. It would be inside undercover under the one roof.
Okay, so the referenced out back was out back inside the building.
The statement on my part.
Okay, thank you.
So I was reading through the the application earlier tonight and the times of operation, I think there was three different places where it was referenced. Twice it was 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM and then one time it was 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So I just want to clarify which which it's supposed to be.
Yeah, we were when we were reviewing the the regs on it, we I believe that they're somewhat inconsistent. One place is eight to one place is seven to seven. We had to pick one. I asked Levi which one he wanted. He said, let's do seven to seven. We're flexible on that. We we thought the seven, seven under the KK was the more appropriate one.
Yeah, so Kelly, the ordinance requires all special use permits fall between the eight and eight hours. Those are the hours of operations for all special use permits. Unless the planning commission changes that or unless it's specified differently within the general criteria for special land use and in the special land use, Section 1205 KK. Number two, it specifies that rural production and processing facilities can have hours of operation limited between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. So the seven to seven is what's enforceable by our ordinance.
Okay, good. Okay.
Kelly, I have a.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a couple of things that were brought up and one I just thought of and one I just want to get some clarification on. Is there a requirement of anything for a septic or a well on this property? Or is that included with the house or there's a special land use have to show a septic or a well on the on the property itself or on the business?
Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah, within the within the construction side. So on the building side of this thing. If they're required to have a bathroom in there, then they would have to get that clarification to Central Michigan District Health Department. When we see the zoning side of it for the home, we would see the residential component of the of the. The homes. Waste. Septic papers basically from the health department, but in this case, the construction side, we're unsure if they're going to have or be required under the building because that's not that's not us. I would suspect they are. And I would suspect that that would be obtained at time of 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 application for building. We can add that, Jim, as a stipulation that if it is required that we obtain a copy of it and have them submit a copy for our records if it's required.
I don't know if you want to go that far. We can decide as a board if you want to do it. I guess that piggybacks are this is part of my next statement or question in regards to. The getting back to the 40 by, let's see, shoot, I had it in front of me here. The 40 by 120, 40 by 120 foot building. We're seeking to approve a special land use to a building or to a property or to that. We don't even know if it meets code. If it meets a local code or not. Is that something we commonly do that we approve especially? I mean.
Yeah, to answer your question, Jim, we always do that because the land use process comes before the construction, the building. In this case, the building is there. If there are things that it does not comply to, under whatever use group the building code requires it to be built to, they'll have to modify and they'll have to bring it up to that standard. But that happens at the construction side with the building with the building code.
It's been a long day and you're correct. I should have realized that's a rookie mistake on my part. Thank you.
No problem.
Are there any other questions? Right, hearing none. Like to open the public comment period for this. So if there's anybody that listening that would like to comment, press star nine on your phone. And Ray will will let you in and order that you. Press star nine.
Ray, do we have any call? We do. Do we have callers in?
We do have one caller in, but it doesn't appear that they have raised their hand at this point.
All right, well, if there are no public comments, I'll close the public comment portion of this meeting. And at this point, we need a motion to discuss. Can't go anywhere. We'll get a motion, folks.
I'll make a motion that move to approve special use permit 20-07, SUP number 20-07 as submitted by Levi and Sadie Yoder. To establish a rural rural production and processing facility in the general agriculture, Ag 2 district and shall further be conditioned upon the following. The applicant shall provide a copy of the driveway permit or approval on the existing driveway from the Isabella County Road Commission for this use. The applicant shall maintain existing screening as shown on the site plan and shall install and maintain a staggered double row of evergreen trees. In the location shown on the site west of the concrete pad, the screening shall be outside of the right of the way and the sight aligning to the neighboring residence to the southwest. The tree shall be a minimum of three feet in height and shall be placed 10 feet on center. Three, the applicant shall comply all requirements of Section 12.05 KK, capital K, capital K, as agreed upon in the application. Four, the applicant's waste disposal plan as described in this application is approved by the planning commission.
Thanks, Jim. We have a second.
O'Neil second.
Right, thanks, Tim. Any discussion about this motion that we have on the table?
I'm going to vote yes on this tonight. I'm always concerned when I see somebody taking activity on a property without getting the proper permits. I think that's just basically as Marilyn Manson says, I don't have enough middle fingers to to support that, somebody doing that to a to a not not following the rules. But at the same time, I don't think that's any reason to hold it up. I think we're making him do some stuff. It's pretty standard now. And again, I don't want to sit there and punish somebody to carry on a business, especially when the neighbors around seem to support it and it fits within the special use characteristics. So I just bring that up because in case I am. In case going forward, I I'm going to reserve the right to hold that against somebody or at least mention it every single time. Because I think honesty is very important and I think it's it needs to be brought out if you're doing something like this.
Thank you, Jim. Any other discussion around this? Motion. All right, I guess I'll throw in here just a little bit to echo Jim's comments. I I think I'm planning on voting yes for this anytime. People in the country want to, you know, entrepreneur entrepreneurial spirit and building sheds and whatever. I think we need to need to back that kind of activity. So I'm all for that. So. This point, Kim, if we could do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Horton.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Commissioner Bean.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Seltzer. Commissioner Silker.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Six yes, motion carries.
All right. Hey, now, the next, next piece up is a non-public hearing at site plan review twenty dash fifteen for the Claire VA clinic. Staff, if you'd like to bring us up to date.
Yep, so this is a site plan review twenty dash fifteen. The applicant is Paul Gafki and Jeff Konzak, I believe it is. This is in Vernon Township, section two, properties located at eleven seven seventy-five North Isabella Road. Application was submitted for a site plan review for expansion of the Veteran Affairs Medical Clinic up there. It is a general commercial district. The VA clinic, just by the Claire, was established in about two thousand and eight, had a small office addition added twenty ten, and in twenty sixteen, they added, substantially added additional parking out there in an effort for this larger expansion to come, which is what's in front of you today. The application includes an eleven thousand six hundred square foot clinic addition and some additional parking. The application includes a detailed set of drawings depicting the building expansion, the parking lot expansion to the south of the building. The north driveway, which is this driveway leading to this expansion, will be provide, will provide for ambulance access and additional patient parking. The proposed building addition provides for additional offices, physician offices and patient examination rooms. We, in, in two thousand and sixteen, the requirements under parking for this type of a facility or for any parking that's over twenty spaces requires some interior landscaping as required by the planning commission. In two thousand and sixteen, there were some discussions in that meeting for that expansion of that parking where they included some safe walk spaces for patients. Instead, on the interior side, instead of the landscaping, that was something that was accepted by you in two thousand and sixteen. They're proposing that again. These walkways are provided for safe and convenient access for the patients basically visiting the clinic. The, we provided for you again the standards in section eleven oh six for site plan review. For your review, we provided you and your staff report the copy of the landscaping requirement under section seven oh seven I eight, which is that, that surface area or that ten percent of the surface area be required for landscaping as approved by the planning commission. Basically, in summary here, this is again a site plan that required for public hearing. But we determined that it appears to be complete application and meets all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. We've provided you with a copy of the site plan checklist. And we have, I believe, five, six, five recommendations that we are recommending to you tonight. So the first one, and I'll read them, is the applicant shall provide an approval to, or permit to install a new well and septic from the Central Michigan District Health Department. The applicant shall provide, this is number two, the applicant shall provide a driveway permit for the upgrade to the existing drive from the Isabella County Road Commission or an approval of the existing driveway. The planning commission approves the use of the walkways if you're going to allow for that again, which indicate on the site plan and act as a landscaping requirement as you're allowed to do under section seven oh seven I eight. The proposed parking lot lighting shall comply with Article three, section three point two zero of the Isabella County zoning ordinance, which is, deals with the lighting being down shielded. And the applicant shall comply, shall apply for and receive their soil erosion sedimentation control permit for the project. Once again, we've provided you with sample approval and sample denial motions for this, and I have no more to add at this time.
Great, thanks, Tim. Any questions for Tim regarding this application? Hearing none. Does Mr. Gaffney have anything you'd like to add to this?
Yes, no, sir. I think it was covered pretty well.
All right. Thank you. Well, at this point, this point, we need a motion and a second to get this up for discussion.
I move to approve site plan review twenty dash fifteen submitted by Jeff Konzak and shall be conditioned upon the following. The applicant, one, the applicant shall provide an approval, an approval or permit to install a new well and or septic from the Central Michigan Department of Central Michigan District Health Department. Two, the applicant shall provide a driveway permit for the upgrade to the existing driveway from the Isabella County Road Commission. Three, the planning commission approves the use of, of walkways indicated on the site plan to act as an interior landscape, to act as the interior landscaping requirement section seven point oh seven IA. Four, the proposed parking lot lighting shall comply with Article three of the Isabella County zoning ordinance. And five, the applicant shall apply for and receive a soil erosion and sediment control permit.
Right, thanks, Tim. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Support second Horton.
All right, Kim, if we could do a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Horton.
Yes.
Mister Rogers.
Yes.
Mister Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Bean.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner Silker.
She's muted again.
Yes.
Six yes, motion carries.
All right. Okay, moving along. I guess this, this point, we have some consultants that are going to get involved with the met tower piece, Tim?
Yeah, so right now we have Alan Bean and Jennifer Stewart from Spicer Group. You may recognize them. They've been involved through the, with the wind turbine project the entire way through the process. Maybe in a little different environment, Alan sitting in front of his doors there, and we're used to seeing him in person. We also have Bill Fahey and Kyle Amara from, representing us from the attorney's office that's been hired on this project. And at this time, I would ask for, we do have a declaration of conflict of interest that's to be reviewed, and I'm going to ask for Mr. Fahey to go ahead and review that. I'd like to let him know prior to him doing that, that both, two of the members that have been declared previously in the past are not on the meeting tonight. They did not show up for the meeting, couldn't be here. That would be Jerry Nyer and Phil Vogel.
All right, Tim, thank you. Good evening, everyone. You've gotten used to this routine by now, I hope, on the project. But very briefly, we need to put on the record the status of conflicts of interest for each of the members of the board in accordance with our, our bylaws. And tonight, what we're going to be considering is a site plan amendment to the site plan that was, that was approved previously for this project. And what is going to occur as a result of that amendment is that two permanent met towers or meteorological towers are going to be removed from the project, and they're going to be replaced with five temporary met power, met towers. So with respect to that project, it, the, the issues involved are as broad essentially as the original application. And therefore, we're going to recite essentially the same conflicts that we've looked at before. With respect to Chair Bean, there are no conflicts to declare, but he wants to have it understood for the record that his nephew Todd received a notice relating to this project since Todd lives within six hundred feet of the project boundary. But that does not cause a conflict of interest for the chair. Also, his brother Jeff, as the Vernon Township Supervisor, received a notice for the project. But again, that isn't something that, under our bylaws, create a relationship that would require Chair Bean to disqualify himself. Vice Chair O'Neal has no conflicts. Commissioner Horton has no conflicts. We, we don't have Commissioner Nyer with us. Commissioner Nyer did disqualify himself because his brother owns property that's leased for the project. He's not here tonight. He's not going to participate. Commissioner Vogel likewise disqualified himself because he owns property as a member of an LLC that is leased for the Apex Project. He's not here tonight. He's not going to participate. Secretary Silker has no conflicts. Commissioner Campbell has no conflicts. And Commissioner Rogers has declared a conflict based upon the fact that he owns property within the project, special use permit notice area. And as a result of that, he will not be participating in the discussions, deliberations or decisions on these site plan amendments. This, this disclosure has been prepared in writing and is available, will be signed by the chair and will be made a part of the record of this, of tonight's meeting. At this point, I can turn it back to you, Tim, or do you just want Alan to get going?
Yeah, well, what I'll do is we'll just ask the host to remove Mr. Rogers at this time from the room and put him into the waiting room, and then we'll bring him back in after we've completed. And Mr. Rogers is in the waiting room? Thank you, Ray. So yeah, so next we have the site plans. The plan reviews have all been done by the Spicer Group, and at this time, I'll go ahead and turn this over to Alan. I will let you know that we're going to, we have a single resolution which was shared with you. Well, there was two, a resolution of support and a deny, to approve and one to deny. It was shared with you early in the week. The resolution is a single action item, even though there are five different applications. We're going to have Alan go through each of those applications. If you have any comments or questions while he's going through it, we'll address them on an individual basis per application or per request per met tower. And then when we finalize, we'll have Mr. Fahey go back through our, our resolutions for both the approval and the denial for your action. So if you'd go ahead, Alan?
Great, thank you, Tim. We have an application of five temporary met towers submitted by Apex for the Isabella Wind Project. The met towers in the big picture are what you would call power performance met towers, and they're there to, my understanding is to measure just the overall wind and other meteorological components of the overall layout of the project, and it's a data collection effort on Apex's part for the whole project. If you fly in an airplane and go over the project area, we have one met tower in Isabella Township at the east end of the, or east border of the project. And then the other four met towers are in Nottawa Township with three in the southeast part of the township and the other one in the northwest of the township, just to kind of give you some context of where these are being cited. The met towers are about a hundred ninety-seven feet tall. They'll be supported by guy wires. And the, the application indicates that they would like to construct these met towers in March of next year of two thousand and twenty-one. And the intent is to have them up for one year, and they'll come down by March first of two thousand and twenty-two. The, our staff reports, we, you should have five, one for each met tower. And I'll go through those one by one, and I'll start off with the Isabella Township Met Tower, which is in section twenty-four of Isabella Township. Oh, great, thanks, Ray. Yes, okay, so this met tower, as you've seen before with our site plan reviews with the, the winter vents, we have a nice little chart where we say what the setback requirements are. And here, we want to talk about the setback from non-participating property lines, and that's one times the tower height. And so in this case, it has to be at least a hundred ninety-seven feet from any non-participating property lines. And we have documented that it's, the nearest property line is three hundred and forty feet away, so we've given that a green check. And so that's okay. Then with public roads, the next line down, the met tower has to be one and a half times the tower height away from that public road, which is just under three hundred feet, and we know that this met tower is twenty-two hundred feet from the nearest road. Moving down the list, the railroad and rail trail requirement, that's another one point five tower height. And yeah, that's the nearest, one of those is about one point seven miles away. Then occupied buildings, that has to be two times to the met tower. And so we're at about three hundred ninety-four feet, and the closest occupied building is one thousand two hundred and five feet away. And then we want to look at the above ground utility lines to round out our setback measurements, and that's three feet. And our measurement shows us twelve hundred feet away from the closest above ground utility line. On the next page, we talk about two considerations. The first one is that the guy wires need to be clearly visible to height of six feet above their anchors of the guy wires. In your packet, you'll see that the applicant has provided a photo that shows the yellow casings around the base of the guy wires, but it didn't indicate the height of the casings. I think Tripp can address that, if that's a question later on, he can address that. And then the second point is the requirement of the zoning ordinance that basically met tower data has to be supplied to the county. That's, that's going to be a condition of the approval. It's going to be a condition of any approval. So that's, that's that tower. Are there any questions? Your pack have a site plan, you should have a sketch plan. Apex has filled out the, the site plan review application and provided a lot of good detail about what they're going to do and whether or not the property owner has signed off on this. So those signatures are in the packet and just is kind of a checkbox. Yes, we checked to make sure all these met towers are located on participating property, so all that checks out.
I guess I have a quick question. So the windmills are already up, and we're putting up a wet, a met tower to look at wind performance. It's kind of curious of what's kind of late to look and see how good the wind performance is now that the windmills are up. What, what are they looking to accomplish with the met towers?
Yeah, so I'll address that in a general way. My understanding, the power performance is for the owner of the wind farm, you know, whether that's Apex or DTE. For, it's, it's a way for them to measure the meteorological data within the wind farm and, and line it up or compare it to the data is in the meteorological measurement equipment in the wind turbines. So my understanding is that it's in the best interest of the wind farm operator to ensure that the wind turbines are operating within the parameters of their warranty. And if Tripp would like to jump on, jump in on this and provide a little bit more specifics about that and how that works, that'd be very helpful.
Yeah, this trip's taken here. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, sure can.
Great, yeah, I think you, you pretty much nailed it. The, the met towers that we're putting up here are basically to verify the conditions that were, that the towers were designed under to verify the power curves and make sure everything's operating the way it was designed. So they'll go up for a short time, they'll collect enough data that they can use to scientifically verify that that information is accurate. And then once they believe they have enough data, then they'll come down. They may not be up for an entire year, but as long as it takes to get that data, which is, you know, three to probably six or so months.
Okay. All right, well, good. Thanks for answering that. Any other questions for? And anybody has at this point? All right, let's keep it moving.
Great, thanks, Ray. I think we're going to go into section eight of Nottawa Township. This, this is the turbine, excuse me, this is the met tower northwest part of the, the project footprint. And here, we do the same thing. We, we have the chart, and we look at the, the five facts. And, you know, just, you know, in terms of the, all the, all five of these, we see that they check out in our compliance with the minimum requirements in your zoning ordinance. And on the next page, it's the same considerations as prior about the, the yellow casings. It didn't show up on the picture, and then, and then again, the data collection requirement is part of it as well. So as you can see, this is a, this is pretty straightforward review. Any, any questions about this one?
Doesn't sound like it.
Okay. All right, now we're going to the south end of the project in Nottawa Township as well. This is the This is the section 34. In the interest of time, I'll just go ahead and say the chart is there. You can see our analysis. We're showing that these five setbacks have been have been met. And so the applicant has exceeded the the requirements. And then the same considerations on the next page are in play as well. Any questions?
Oh.
All right. Okay, here we've got in section 35, just the east of the one we just looked at in section 35. So this this met tower is technically A dash 005. So on the screen, it's the one on the west side of that that section. And again, here, the five setbacks are in compliance. We don't see any issues. And then the considerations for the the yellow sleeve and the the data is is part of this analysis as well. Questions? And this is a met tower A dash 006, same situation. The setbacks are in compliance. The yellow sleeve is still a consideration, and then the the data collection is still a requirement. Any questions on this met tower?
Oh.
All right. Good. Um, great. So again, these five met towers are meant to replace two met towers that were reviewed last year. And so as indicated earlier by Mr. Fahey, these are all five are by Mr. Fahey and Mr. Newport that all five of these are put into a a document to have one vote. So with that, I'll turn it over to Fahey to talk about the the approval or denial document and 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 you know, go over to your face. I was wondering, Trip, do you have anything else you'd like to add about the project or the the five met towers that the planning commission should consider?
No, I do not. Thank you for asking.
Okay. All right, Bill, why don't you take it next up here?
All right, Alan, thanks so much. Ray, are you able to pull up a copy of the proposed decision granting the partial site plan?
You're muted, right?
Excellent. All right, thank you. So so this is the first alternative resolution that you could be voted on by you tonight. This this particular decision would grant the site plan approval. As you see, it has a number of parts. Starts out by the applicant. Then it describes the the application going all the way back to the special use permit that was approved back on January 31, 2019. And the site plan that was approved on August 28, 2019. It describes that essentially the applicant wants to amend the site plan to add these five met towers and to remove the previously approved two permanent met towers. It describes that the met towers will be installed about March 1, 2021 and would be removed on or before March 1, 2022. They'd be 197 feet tall. The descriptions of the locations are are there in numbers one through five. It refers here to the report by Spicer Group and which reviews the application and proposed the conditions for this project on September 30, 2020. All those things are are premises on which you would be making this decision. The next section is what is referred to as the findings, and the findings consist of basically this. Number one, you would be incorporating the staff report prepared by Spicer as a basis for your decision. And secondly, you'd be making specific findings under zoning ordinance section 11.06A, which is the basically the standards for granting a approval in this case. And as you see, the state, the the findings are one through four here on the second page. The first deals with vehicular and pedestrian traffic, not really an issue here. Second is that the application is harmonious with and not injurious or objectionable to existing and projected uses in the immediate area. Third is that the application will be adequately served by necessary improvements. And finally, number four, that the application is adequate to provide for the health, safety, and general welfare of persons and property on the site and in the neighboring community. So you'd be finding here that all of those four of four of those were met. The next section is referred to as conclusions. Essentially, what you are concluding is that based upon all the materials that have been provided to you, including the report by Spicer, you believe that it is appropriate for this site plan amendment to be granted. That, however, will be subject to the next section referred to as conditions. And there are a number of conditions that have been that we're recommending. The first one is basically we're going to carry over all of the conditions that were previously contained in the site plan and the special use permit decisions. Secondly, you would be rescinding the portion of your previous site plan and special use permit decisions that approved those two permanent met towers. And then third, you would be approving the five requested met towers with the following four conditions. First of all, the the guy wires that Alan referred to and have to be clearly visible to a height of six feet above the anchors. Second, the applicant is required to provide the zoning administrator a summary of the data that's collected by the met towers. Third, the met towers, these temporary ones must be removed no later than March 1, 2022. And finally, all additional permits required by the County Community Development Department, the Road Commission, the Drain Commissioner, and Eagle are required to be obtained. And finally, the applicant Apex is required to comply with all of the applicable local state and federal rules and regulations. So that's that's it for your for your approval resolution. Let me just very quickly, Ray, if you want to pull up the denial resolution, I can go through that just very, very briefly. So in the denial resolution, it it reads much the same. The only the only real difference comes when we get to the findings, finding number two, you you would be finding under these findings that this this amendment does not comply with the required findings under section 11.06A of the zoning ordinance. And and therefore, you would be making a determination that the ordinance was not being satisfied by this application. Therefore, you would be making a conclusion of denial rather than approval. So that is a that is a, I think, complete enough summary of what it is that that you're being asked to do. And the appropriate thing at this time would be for one of you to make a motion to to adopt either the approval decision or the denial decision, so we can get something on the table for discussion.
Do we have anybody that wants to make a motion for either approval or denial?
Commissioner Horton here. I will make a motion that we approve. I lost my cover sheet. Let's see here. I make a motion to granting partial site approvals SUP 18 dash 09 with conditions that are contained and basically adopt this whole paper.
The decision granting partial site plan approval SUP 18 dash 09 with conditions.
Yes. Yes.
Neil, second.
All right. Any discussion about these about these proposed met towers? All right, hearing none. From my side, it looks like it's all, everything's in order, and we already had met towers. There's no reason not to do do any more of them. All the requirements have been met. So, Kim, could we do a roll call?
Commissioner Silker.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Bean.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers. Oh, I'm sorry. He's, oh, Commissioner Horton.
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
All right, I guess at this point, Mr. Rogers can come back in.
Mr. Rogers is back in the meeting.
All right. Thanks, Ray. All right, brings us up to the next public comment section. So is there anybody that has any comments? Now is a good time to bring it up.
Mr. Chairman, there's no other public that is participating in the call other than the applicants that are in as well as the county consultants.
All right. Hearing that, we'll close the public comment period. And is there any staff comments?
Staff has no additional comments tonight.
Hey. Funding Commissioner comments. Mr. Horton?
Just real quick, I was just, as we were voting right there, I thought to myself, why on a Zoom meeting, what would it be like if one of us suddenly lost internet connectivity? Wouldn't that be something? Get all the way to the very end of it and couldn't do a vote. I only think I think that's one of the only thing, Tim, to direct it towards you. If I could, after the meeting, if you could, I'm going to like to call you for about two to three minutes of your time after the meeting, if that would be okay with you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Other than that, I have no other comments.
Right, Mr. O'Neil?
No comments.
Okay, Anne? Any comments?
Not tonight. No, not tonight.
All right, good. Uh, Campbell, anything to add?
No, not this evening.
Okay, Nathan?
The only thing I wanted to add is I've been talking to people around the community. The part that keeps coming back about these turbines is the two time setback that can overlap onto a nonparticipating person's property seems to sit sour with a lot of folks that aren't being compensated for land that's being consumed by the setback of a turbine that they have no right to then sell to a person in good faith, be able to put a house on it. And that's the thing that keeps coming back through our with our zoning that we established that seems to be not sitting well in the community from my perspective.
All right. Thank you, Nathan. Oh, I don't think that I've missed anybody. And I don't have any comments either. So I'd entertain a motion to close the meeting.
Motion to close, Horton.
Looking for a second.
Silker, second.
Okay. And a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Bean.
Yes.
Commissioner Horton.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Silker.
Pretty sure that was a yes.
I think that was a yes.
We got you.
Six yes, motion carries.
All right, meeting is adjourned. See y'all in a month.
All right. Everybody.
Thanks, Jennifer. Thanks, Alan.